All right. We're gonna call the workshop to order and get it started.
Thank you very much. First item is the discussion to reinstate public comments to our agendas. And that would be in the council meeting. This came from, I apologize for not remembering, I believe a few council members have made this request. State law under Open Meetings Act does not necessar- the state law does not say that you must allow individuals to speak. It's Open Meetings Act basically says that they can come here. So I want you all to know that you're not in violation if you allow public comments, but you're not in violation of the law if you don't allow public comments. So that would be up to the council to set their own rules. Some suggestions we've had is do a three-minute public comment section at the beginning. You could come in, state your name, you have three minutes. At the pleasure of the mayor and council, if they so choose, they can extend that time. So let's say an individual's speaking for three minutes and you wanted to let them to continue, you surely could make a motion, you could vote on it quickly, you could do a head nod, you could do it however you want to do to allow that to keep going. A city secretary could keep time on that three minutes, as she does such a good job at doing. You could say that the public comment could just be for items on the agenda, or you could allow the public comment to be an open item. What I would strongly, strongly urge us to do is to not respond to those, because then you start getting into the violation of open meetings where you're starting a new business item. So what I would suggest is if you have an individual that comes up and makes some great points and you really want us to look at it, I would accept direction from the mayor by saying, Serena, please take a look at this, deal with it, put it on the next agenda, whatever it is that you would want me to do. And that's the direction that we would take, rather than making a response and going into a Q and A session with someone. So just throwing it out there.
I have a question. So, do we have on that statement when we do have the public comments, because we used to have this as a general public comment thing, do we have it on there that the council is not supposed to respond to your comment? Because I think that should be clear, and I don't think a lot of folks know that.
We'll put it on there.
It needs to be real clear, maybe even underlined, that we're not supposed to, because I think they get annoyed that we don't comment, they don't know why we should.
And tell them why, you tell them to speak.
It opens up a new business item.
Yes, tell them, explain to them.
I do have that, that I post where they're supposed to sign in, now whether they read it or not, but I can add it to that.
But maybe underlined or emphasized. Or when they came up, right when you say you have three minutes, the council can't respond to you.
It does put the council in an awkward precarious position whenever they say something, you go, mm-hmm.
You're putting the cart before the horse, though, you're presupposing that we're gonna reinstate comments.
Nope, I would just say if you were, but if you were not, then it's part of the plan too.
I mean, I don't know who requested, can I ask why anymore? Because it opens up so many open meeting violation possibilities.
Well, I'm one of them who wanted to do it. And it's because I've seen multiple people come into the council chambers that wanted to talk about something and they couldn't. And I feel like it's our duty to be able to respond to the people, we're here to serve them. And I feel like if they can't speak openly about what they have a problem with, then it's not right for us to keep that away from the public.
I agree with that, I just, if it's an agenda item, they're gonna be able to speak to it anyway.
Right, well, I'll give you an example. We had two of the guys that come in for the ducks that wanted to talk about the duck blinds. And they were both extremely disappointed because they couldn't talk about it. It wasn't on the agenda, they didn't find out about it until late. And I actually would have loved to have heard what they had to say, but it wasn't on the agenda, so they couldn't talk. And that's, I just think it's not fair. You know, for somebody to take the time to come up here thinking that they're gonna be able to address the council and then to find out that they're just being turned away. And I actually think it looks bad on the city to do that.
I understand that fully. We have such a venue right here to let them talk for five minutes if they want to, without even a question, unless we're getting time to go.
Do people know that, though?
I don't know if we've educated them in that, or what, but we have this.
It's a public meeting, just like the other meeting. Posted just like the other meeting.
Have them workshop.
Well, I know Mary and I have had this discussion, and I tend to agree. I do think that we could do it in two different ways. One's general discussion. I know when I was, before I was on council, I went up to city council multiple times and just told the city that Lyons, for example, is having a fish fry and saying the day, not being negative or anything, right, just doing that. But I think they should have a general comment. If your comment has anything to do with an agenda item, then we can do what we've been doing, which is you have to talk at that time only. And we can stop them and say, we're gonna talk about that on the agenda, please talk to us later. But if you want to say something at this time, because I think it's good to get comments. You're gonna get some negative comments if you have positive comments in there, but people announce things that are going on in town that we might not know about. So I think there's some positive to that. But if they're gonna talk about the agenda, separate that out, maybe that would answer that question.
What does our agenda say, community announcements?
Yeah, there's announcements and recognitions.
I don't know how that got killed, because we had that initially, and somehow that switched, maybe I missed the meeting, but it seems like that was a map, either Matt made that decision or something. But that wasn't discussed, getting rid of it, in my opinion, that was not discussed.
It was discussed.
Well, maybe I wasn't at the meeting, maybe it was at one workshop, you guys decided to do it without everybody talking about it.
And we're doing it again, we got four of us here, and we're missing three.
Yep, then we can have it as a council item, but I really don't think that, I think that most, everybody should be involved in that discussion, rather than either way going.
And see, we've tried it both ways. And I, you know, I've been here for both. And personally, I don't think it, I hate to have somebody, then they get mad at the city and they're, they don't think it's fair that they come up and they want to talk, no, you can't talk.
Well, they had a forum, we made a forum for them right here. Now, we've been doing it for, what, two years?
The six o'clock workshop?
The six o'clock workshop. And that way, they, year and a half. That way, they not help to five minutes and making her watch the deal. We have listened to several different problems. I'm not taking a side on the deal, but we do have community announcements and recognitions. If you want to come and plug the, that had been taken away to plug Lyons Club. It's right on top of our agenda, first item. And so it's there. If those guys, whoever they were, I mean, I know who they were, but just not call names, if whoever councilman they talked to should have informed them that we could have listened to them for 10 minutes if they had a legitimate argument or legitimate side.
I think they've talked to Patty, I think. And I think she actually told them to come to the council meeting and talk, if I remember correctly.
So we do allow, mayor, we do allow during the item, you would allow, if there were 20 people there, give you worst case scenario, because I've seen it, 20 people there, would you let each of them speak?
No.
How, okay.
What I try to do, if they're there for that, and Wanda knows this, Wanda and myself go out and say, look, you're here for one, you're here for one too. Please just pick a spokesman, or maybe two. But we do not have time in a council meeting to listen to 20 people say the same thing over and over again.
Okay, and that's when it was public comment.
So there used to be, it would be used to be labeled public comment for that. So how are y'all willing to, whatever you want?
I just want everybody to hear the same side of it. If it's public announcements, we can go to space and have had since we changed it. If it's, you want this council to hear you, and maybe five minutes isn't gonna get it done, or three minutes isn't right and done, then we can allow 15 minutes up here if they've got it.
I wonder if we could before, okay, where we have that sign up, is to make that more clear as to how this works. If you have an agenda item, make sure that's talked about during that specific time period. I don't know if that's clear. If you have a general comment, just something more. And did you know the workshop time is there for you to also come and talk about your concerns? But I don't know if everybody realizes that. So it's usually more interest groups, or interests only generally.
On the, on the workshop agenda, you know, it never actually says, there isn't an item that says, come and speak, except where maybe, I'd probably make this a little bit more clear on number three, where it says, request for future items of discussion. Is that where you would allow the public to speak? I'm just trying to find where in the workshop were we actually telling the public they had to talk?
That's not, that's usually just for us.
Because if you wanted to, you could just say that at the workshop, you could do a little public comment, rather than in the council agenda.
And that's fine, as long as there's a venue that they can talk that they are aware of, then I don't have a problem with that.
And then you leave the council regular workshop, regular meeting to
The way it is.
Community announcements and recognitions.
That's, that's fine, as long as it's clear and people understand. I just hate it when somebody comes up here and they don't know, they're not informed, they want to talk, and, you know, I just.
And if you want you in the workshop, you could always have somebody kind of in charge of, if you see somebody, please tell us your name, put what you're gonna talk about,
Address.
You know, right before this workshop, or right in the beginning. And that way, the mayor can kind of control that and kind of see what's going on, and if there's a comment, you know, he's looking to be the gate.
Well, I try to do that, and for time to, I mean, but we give them more than five minutes. She won't bring her little deal up here.
I can bring my time around.
No, no.
I can, I can.
But we can't, this is a good time for us to listen. Most of the time, we've been on the council floor by 6:30. So we have time to hear that and put it in our minds. And it's televised too. We're not sweeping them under the carpet. Just televised, have an opportunity to let us listen to them.
The other thing, I was kind of related to this, it's not necessarily, well, they are citizens, but like board members. Somehow there was this change that I don't remember conversation specifically on, but I'm trying to remember the, I think it was the, it wasn't historic, might have been the Historic Committee, something like that. But those guys, or the Plan, it was the Planning Commission, that's what it was. There was kind of this controversial thing that happened in the, in the Planning Commission, and it was unclear what they were doing. And the guy, I think it was the chair, was gonna come up and speak, and we said, oh, well, we don't want to, that's not appropriate, or something like that. He wasn't able, and we said, we can't advocate.
I figured it was Joe Chapel, wasn't it?
And it's like, no, it wasn't Joe. Vern. And so it wasn't necessarily, I care for anybody to advocate, I just want basic information as to why that committee decided one way or another.
That was my fault. And I think it was a good reason that he didn't speak. Those people are volunteers. They, their job is to make a recommendation to you. Renee is the planner who attends that meeting, takes the minutes, and is supposed to explain to you what happened at that meeting.
Well, the minutes were very convoluted, and I could not make a decision based on those minutes.
That's a problem, if the minutes are bad, but.
I was hoping he could explain those minutes, what were they talking about. That's what I was hoping.
What you don't want is getting into an argument with one of your volunteer planning commissioners. And that's gonna happen. If you, I think your board people should never come up and address you, quite frankly, on their actions. You might talk to them before you get to the meeting, if you want to. But if you do that in a public meeting, it, it can turn ugly real fast.
I haven't really noticed, I didn't expect them to argue with anybody, just inform us. And before that, they were doing that, and it seems like all of a sudden they were saying, we're not gonna do that.
Well, they did, they did, they did it ever since I've been your city attorney on deals that the Planning Commission's been advising. And I've always found that uncomfortable, very uncomfortable.
That the council can decide.
Because that's not their job. Their job is not to come up here and explain themselves to you.
Can we specifically request, if we feel like we're not getting, like the minutes are unclear, can we specifically request, I, we do want to hear from one of these guys, can we do that? Because I felt like I brought these guys, I actually was like wanting this guy to come up, and they're, nope, nope, we're not gonna do that.
Well, the problem, I guess the other.
It put me in a tough position.
Yeah, but if you've got, let's say you've got a three to two vote on the Planning Commission, then you've got one Planning Commissioner up there telling you, basically, this is what happened from his either majority or minority perspective. And then you're back to, well, what did the others think? Did they come and present their position? Or you just let the staff present what happened at that meeting and the recommendation?
Correct me if I'm wrong, that the recommendation of that board goes to Renee, let's say it is the Planning Commission, and shouldn't she be presenting?
She does, yeah, she does, and that's her job.
I understand that, but does that?
She wasn't able to answer that question about the minutes.
That's what I was about to say, if, if the staffer cannot answer a question, I would, I respectfully disagree on a legal, if you want information as a council member, we should be able to provide you either the staffer or someone from that board to be able to answer the questions.
Because I was put in a very tough position.
We sent her back to the board.
You could.
Two different ways of looking at that.
Whatever it takes, you need it, but it's not a, it's not a question of. It's not, right, you can do that.
Do what?
We sent her back to the commission to get the answer.
Bring her back to us.
Yeah, you take up the item too, that's the information.
And we will try to avoid that as much as possible, that might have been a one of the.
It doesn't happen very often, but that, I hope not.
It hasn't happened but that one time.
Right, I would hope not.
I just knew that that.
That's all the time it's had.
And that was just one time I thought this is related to this idea of comments, and that I didn't feel like I got the full information, and so.
There's, there's many ways that you can gather this public comment. So it appears to me, what I'm hearing is that during the regular council meeting, you would like to, if you have an item on the agenda, you would allow them to speak at that time, not at the item, at the time of the item, rather than at the beginning. So we want to, is that kind of the head nods I'm getting? But allow a, if, if an individual had a, what I'm gonna call a general public comment, whether you call that a complaint, whether you call it, whatever it might be, and it's not an announcement, and it's not a recognition, are you, are you interested in placing it on the workshop agenda in this room at six o'clock to give that public outlet? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Well, it seems to me that if they can talk to you, like, if we have good instructions that say, for example, is this a complaint or something like that, then the appropriate action is go see the city manager, and she will schedule a time at the workshop to deal with it.
And that's what we're here for too, I mean, they should be able to talk to us, but there are still some people who walk in that, you know, they just want to talk to everybody.
Right.
Well, if you, I don't know how many people were here for the last discussion, but the last discussion, we were actually talking about some people that came up there and talked about things that didn't matter to us. They were county issues and things like that.
But they probably didn't know.
Open mic night, is what it was, yeah, they knew what they were doing. People knew what they were doing, and that was part of the reason that we talked about putting it, putting it away and doing the way we're doing it now. So I think we've got three missing again. Probably one of these things, we need to have everybody here to talk about this, so we have the full discussion.
What's the story for council? I know Councilman Hazelwood wouldn't want to be here.
Right, Councilmember Mueller is out ill, and I have not heard from Vice Mayor.
I don't, I don't think we're, I guess the recommendation is not to change anything, necessarily procedurally on the actual meeting itself, but it is a recommendation, I guess, I think Mayor Burcher mentioned, or maybe as you've mentioned on the workshop, adding that, as well as my recommendations to make the instructions when they sign in more clear. The procedure is go see you if it's a complaint, especially if it's a complaint specifically, go see you and we'll schedule it here. But that's a kind of an instruction thing, so we're not changing the meeting procedure at all.
And I recognize Councilmember Thomas's comments about maybe lengthy items that may not have anything to do with this governing body, that might have something to do with another governing body. And I think where you may be able to limit that is the three minutes. And if it's something that you really, really want to hear, then you can always extend that. Three minutes is a long time to actually speak. If you've ever had to speak for three minutes, or have a toothache for three minutes, it's a long time.
Is that something, though, as we, somebody on the council, whether it's you or somebody, in the middle of this three-minute diatribe, if it's a very, very much a complaint situation, say ma'am, or sir, this is not an appropriate venue right now for this. The procedure is to go through me first, we'll schedule a time at the workshop for this complaint. Or, or come talk to me, we'll have a conversation, but this is not the venue.
Well, for us, if someone came to me and had a real issue, and they talked to me about it, I wouldn't say come to the city council and talk to everybody. I would talk to the city manager, my shirt, and say, I've got someone who's got an issue, we need to get it on the agenda.
That's just where we, I agree. That's where we got, to get all the council on the same, we do have a workshop. It's a time that we want to be able to listen, possibly at length, if it's got some gravity to it, you know.
Then it becomes an agenda item, and they can speak on it.
Right, we can, we can give them room. And I don't know that the next council meeting, we wouldn't have listened to those guys.
Which is good procedure to do that.
The next, the next council meeting, those guys, we could have been told, you can, you've got a, basically an open mic at workshops, as long as time allows. And then we could hear your side of the point.
And if it's an immediate problem, then talk to the manager after. Or talk to the council or manager after, and we'll deal with your situation.
What I'm hearing then is that we'll take a look at what document is provided to the public, make sure that that's very clear. And am I hearing to put an item on the workshop or not? Or do you want to wait, or how would y'all like to handle that? Trey gets to decide.
It's two to two, Trey.
I have a question, do we have this on the website at all, this information? So I think if we update that information, we should make sure that's regularly there on the website.
Sure, we will, we will.
So they have the complaints, and they go to that.
We can, we can. Easy, sure. I can't help but, but share with you that I've seen this in various communities that I've been in, and it's been all over the board. So it's really whatever you want. I've been in communities that I do recall sitting in public comment, and an individual came up and was talking about a completely different, they were talking about, it was a commissioner's issue, and completely different, and they allowed her to speak for three minutes, and said, thank you, ma'am. And then a staffer approached her, explained it to her, and it, so it does happen every once in a while, it does.
We had a whole discussion about the hospital one night.
And I'm not sure that I've ever cut anybody off. When they slip in under the radar, I let them say their deal, and then tell them, try and tell them, proceed early, the city manager, tell them procedure, please make appointment with me, and we can talk about this. But we did not let somebody come up, because we didn't want it to just escalate past, so. And that's, as I remember, one time, with the city manager, so.
Not real old. So how would you want me to proceed?
Well, do we need someone, someone up for Trey?
Yeah, where do you have to go to?
Public comment, not placing public comment necessarily on the regular agenda item, but still allowing individuals to speak if there's an agenda item. So if there's an item on the agenda that they'd like to speak to at that time, they would be able to give some public comment?
Yeah, I think if, as long as it's an agenda item, I think it needs to be pertaining to the meeting at hand. By all means, I think the issue that we've had before in the past, if somebody gets in and wants to lobby for sheriff at the podium, or, I mean, I'm just using as an example, or talk about how poor the school system is for some particular reason, or, you know. Yeah, we're the hospital, or various factors that the city doesn't have any control over. And I think, you know, that's the, you know, that's what we're trying to hedge. We want to keep the meeting on cue and, and deal with the specific items. I think you guys are on the right track, being like, public discussion to an agenda. I mean, it's one thing for, it's one thing for a citizen, I just use this example, it's one thing for a citizen to come in to have a public comment about, and maybe this is the segue to it, though, this is come in and say, well, how do, I've got four lots next to me that are overgrown, what is my protocol for getting that taken care of? It's another to come in and say, the guy who owns the four lots, I just don't like him. So, you know, that doesn't have anything to do with us.
Well, I think what we're trying to change is, one, is maybe add a comment time during the workshop.
I think that's fair.
The other one is, in when they sign up, have a better set of instructions on, if this is a complaint, please see the city manager, who will schedule a time at a workshop to air your complaint, if that's the case.
And we can, we can.
Well, I think that's part of the deal, is that if it's not discussing the actual item on the agenda, then it needs to be pretty screened off. What is your item for discussion tonight? If it's, I want to complain about the school district, or I want to complain about, I'm gonna lobby. As the sheriff saw, I think we, you know, Wanda has to say, thank you for coming tonight, but that's not dealing with you.
But part of it is to clarify those instructions before they sign up, so they read that, and they know that it's a complaint, go see the city manager. If they do come up anyway, that basically we can always say, this is not the appropriate time and place for this complaint, please see the city manager.
Sure, thanks, guys.
I think you, that sounds like you guys have flogged this.
It sounds like, if Vice Mayor come in and said exactly what we just said.
Sure, good job, Vice Mayor, he was listening, yeah.
Thought I seen people around the corner.
Vice Mayor, also then, on the flip side of that coin, so we, we agree that on the regular agenda, but on the workshop, should we place an item on there that's a public comment that, that may or may not have to do with the exact agenda item? I'm trying to listen to what Councilmember Coffin said about.
Well, yeah, I think it's a little looser discussion, I think we have the opportunity to kind of hear some, you know. But I think there, we also have to be cognizant too, that we're not gonna just randomly.
And we still can't make comment on those comments.
No, no.
And we need a hook to pull someone off the stage when they start.
I can do that.
That's part of the instructions, you need to say that the councilman cannot comment on your comment.
Well, I can rely on the city manager to interject at that time, I worry.
It just needs to be apparent, because I think it's been mentioned by her, and I've noticed before, we're putting a bad point, where we have to actually explain, we can't comment to you. Or we just go comment, and it's like.
I've been happy to be there. People are staring at you, wondering why you're not giving them an answer.
So we just need to make it clear and make it, so everybody knows it's public record that they hate it.
How about this, we will, what I'm gonna call a trial run, if it fails miserably, we'll bring it back. We will identify better instructions, place public comment on the workshop, leave the agenda, the regular council agenda as is. Wonderful.
What we're talking about is we got time in this work, we're always down there 15, 20 minutes early. We can listen to someone's problems up here, it's televised, we're not trying to hide it in the background.
But ultimately, the best way is for them to talk to you and get it on the agenda, if there's a real one.
If it's, sure.
And like I said, I think what we've had in the past is we've just had an opportunity for people to have a voice on TV, to be able to, and so, it has nothing to pertain to what's being discussed.
Well, they either have acts to grind potentially, or they just don't know. Because they haven't known any other venue in their history. So this will, this will kind of put them in that, and, so is this something that we can do internally as an administrative thing?
Absolutely, you don't have to.
Or, okay.
Are those items considered new business?
No, no, not new business.
Because new business, you have to.
Totally different ballgame.
That's a whole new, yeah.
No, no, and that's why you're not, that's why you're not responding to them, because you as a governing body are not bringing forward a new business item without hearing proper notification.
New business is something we have no control.
I think I basically just told them, we appreciate you coming, thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for your comment.
And to take, take a little bit of the heat off of council, that's when you can always come to me and say, Ms. Breland, please handle this, and then they know it's time to step away, and I'll be following up with them.
Will you look into this, please?
Yes, sir, that's what I always say, yes, sir. Item number two, questions and discussions regarding agenda items. If you have the agenda in front of you, we'll be talking, I have, Randall will be talking a little bit about an individual that has come forward and has allowed us to realize that we would like to go out for bids for minerals owned by the city, and, how many acres is that, Randall?
Hundred and sixty acres.
Hundred and sixty acres, we have the right to bid mineral rights. And the next item is an executive, executive session. Am I doing this right? I mean, yeah, it's all consent, I'm sorry, executive session, even in the absence of two council members. I am assuming you still want to move forward with that executive session?
Yeah, I need to do that.
Okay, and that's what we have on the agenda. Any questions?
Do we, does anybody have any questions for our chief on the agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry, and that is in the, out of G I D A, which is to consider approval to award a bid, I'm sorry, it's not to award a bid, it's, I'm sorry, Gun. I'm sorry, I got my consent mixed up, I apologize, team. That's for the purchase of a ambulance off of a HDAC contract person.
Can you talk to us about that?
Sure. We've got four ambulances in our fleet. We have a 2008 model that was the first year that Ford built this particular diesel motor, and it is very problematic. That truck is on its fifth engine block, its third turbo, and it's almost five years old and almost 100,000 miles, so it's fixing to go out of warranty. It's something the city does not want to pay to maintain, because this particular motor, you have to take the cab off the truck to work on the motor. So we're aiming to trade that in while it's still got a little bit of value, and before we start dumping a bunch of money into it and replace it with a new one, which we had originally planned to replace one, or refurbish one this year, this budget year anyway. So what we're looking to do, we did a lot of shopping around, talked to a lot of services here in Oklahoma and out of state, trying to get some advice on switching manufacturers, because the three of the four that we have were built from a company out of Houston, and they utilize a, basically 5,500 watt RV generator to power everything in the ambulance module. Every time one of those messes up, it has to go to the ONAN generator shop in Oklahoma City, and every time it's 1,500.
Every time one of those messes up, it has to go to the ONAN generator shop in Oklahoma City, and every time, it's fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, every time we go in to get it fixed. So really, that's the only ambulance problems we have with the actual module part, is those generators messing up. Our fourth ambulance is a regular conventional type, where the module's powered off the chassis, we have zero problems with it. So we're aiming to go back to that traditional style, we don't feel that the generator's necessary, we think it'll save us a lot in terms of maintenance costs. And in shopping around and talking to other EMS services, we kind of narrowed our search down to Frazier, which was the company that builds the generator modules, which we were pretty unhappy with. American Emergency Vehicles, or A E V, which is based out of North Carolina, we've got a dealership in Alborado, Texas, and Osage Industries, which is based out of Lynn, Missouri, their factory, whole operation is there in Lynn. We, myself and one of our firefighters have been to A E V's factory in North Carolina, pretty spectacular and amazing operation, so we kind of had that in our brain. We went to the Osage factory a few weeks ago, just to kind of compare, big difference. Family operated, there's five partners, they all work there every day. Small town manufacturing operation, there's a lot of quality and kind of care put into the trucks being built, you could really see it in the craftsmanship. So based on that, and the references and talking to other agencies, and the warranty repair, which is in Midwest City, which is a huge benefit to us, based on the H G A C contract pricing, we've talked to Osage and got a proposal that's attached to the agenda for a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, including fifteen thousand dollars trade-in for the O eight model, so, kind of what we're looking at.
Do, so you're, you're saying that the generators, if we go just to the other generator, you can run all of your equipment without a problem?
The big thing, there was a push for those generator-style trucks back in the early to mid nineties, because the amp load on the chassis was so much that it was killing alternators, you were constantly, I'm sure you can remember that, always having to replace alternators. With the advent of LED lighting, they have no amp draw, hardly at all, there's not as much strain on the chassis as there used to be. Plus, they beefed up the alternator output on these diesel motors, so it, you know, ones came up and the other ones came down, and it's actually kind of reversed itself. And there's really just not a need for it anymore.
What's the cost, is there cost difference? I mean, is this a bid, or?
Well, going off H G A C, it's already pre, prebid through the Houston-Galveston area council of governments, which were a member of that, the city is, so it follows all the bidding laws in Oklahoma and.
I've used H G A C pricing many a times before.
What's, what's the turnaround time?
The problem, we probably won't see the truck until the summer. The problem is Dodge, we're looking to switch from Ford to Dodge due to the problems we've had with the Ford motor. Municipal services mechanics think we'll have a lot better luck with the Dodge.
It's going to have him in.
No, it's actually going to have a comment as diesel, but.
Just checking, sure, I know how you, I know how you love it.
Dodge is shut down for retooling for their models, and those chassis will start hitting the ground till March. So by the time the manufacturer gets it and builds it, we're looking for June, July.
It's set down, so it's going to be serviceable enough to wait.
Oh, yeah, 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 we, we've patched it up where we can use it if we have to.
Logan County Road.
And honestly, that's the biggest thing, the trucks we're replacing is an F three fifty, two-wheel drive, and these roads have beat it to death.
Sure, sure.
This is a little beefier chassis and four-wheel drive, so.
Well, I apologize, Mayor, I jumped the gun, I skipped over consent items, so I apologize.
All's done, gun done, go off.
Thank you.
Permission to jump in.
Thank you, Chief Harlow, for that. Also in that consent is the two ambulance items, the, the last one would be the recognizing the federal holiday of New Year's Day and asking y'all to, to cancel that meeting as, as we have to report to the state when we meet. So we like to cancel early, early on for transparency reasons, so that's part of the consent agenda. So that's, that's, any other further questions? Any further questions about tonight's agenda? Wonderful, moving on to item number three, request for future items of discussion. What's our running list, I think? Sorry.
I think right ahead.
I will say that we, we would like to bring back to you the mineral wells pond, and bring in our engineer about it. We are hearing comments from the public about why are you feeling that if water were second-year drought, about to be third-year drought? So I'm already hearing the various conversations about that. Once I think we, we spoke about it publicly, we started getting the negative comments. So I, I do want to bring that back and let y'all guide us and direct us about making that decision about a pond because of the, the water levels at Lake Guthrie and at Lake Liberty. So I think that's a, a conversation that still needs to be had in January.
And I've actually had a, a citizen request this week, it pertained to the mineral water at Highland Park, and he was wanting to know, he said, you know, back in the day, they actually used that mineral water for, for the city's advantage. He said, why can't we do it again, we need to bring that back in, you know, like sulfur, in Oklahoma, they use their hot springs, they use their hot springs.
People carry gavlin jugs down there, fill their jugs for, because they thought it was good for arthritis, rheumatitis.
Yeah, and I guess the fountain or whatever we had down there is not operable now, they said something about it rusted over.
I'm not sure now, it's not just coming off city water. I mean, I just, I'm not sure that that's, it's the same water you pull on them, no freezes.
So I think that's. So whatever well we have there for the mineral water is, we don't have.
More than likely an operable, we'll, we'll take a look at it. That's at Highland Park, in the well.
Millwell.
Sorry, thank you. Any other future items? Call me if you have any. We are hereby adjourned.